So we'll call the meeting to order and rise for credulity.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Sue, roll call please.
Councilmember Campfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here.
Item two, review rules of procedure for local city council. Michael.
Inter-packet is our, every year we were to go over our rules of procedure. And if there's any, basically, if there's any issues with the way they are now, or if we want to make changes, we can. I know in the three years, this is the third time I've done this, and not made any changes to anything that we've done. And these are pretty, these are more procedural than anything else. Didn't know if council wanted to look at this a little and pick more adapter, if you wanted to just keep it the way it was.
Anybody see anything that jumps out that they want changed or want to talk about?
I think last year we did a huge recap of all of them, right? The year before?
I think it was two years ago we did. And you did it, you did it the year before I came here.
Yeah.
I don't think there was anything that I saw that jumped out. Nobody approve them as presented, I guess? You want a motion for that, Mike?
Yeah, you push it.
So moved.
House support. Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Number three, motion for the consent agenda, that would include the revised agenda, the closed session minutes, and then the community college property taxes.
I'll make the present, two chapters presented.
House support. Any change or discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
All right, citizen councilman, item was not on the agenda. Anybody? No? Old business, item five, number A, showboat, Michael.
Yes, Mayor of State Council. At our, what was it, December 17th committee of the whole meeting, we met to discuss the showboat. A lot of things have changed since that meeting. That meeting, we were trying to figure out how we were going to fundraise 1.3 million dollars. Three weeks later, now we have that 1.3 million dollars. Thanks to the grant we received from the state of Michigan, Senator Dave Hildebrand. That government gets signed into law, I believe, the 28th of December. So we anticipate receiving our funds, I believe, on January 19th. Wanted to kind of just discuss it briefly. I think some things have changed. I think we're at the point now where we can move forward. One of the things that, in my discussions with Senator Hildebrand, was the fact that we had already received bids. And one bid we did receive was from a Michigan-based company. I think that may have helped in moving the issue forward. But I think we're at the point now where with the bid we received, I think we want to go back to, to the, what was the name of the company? I can't remember the name of the company right now.
Boran Ironworks.
Boran Ironworks, I'm sorry. Out of, they're out of Onaway. And probably try and get value engineer some of those costs down. And then I think the committee should meet pretty soon and start putting a plan back together and report back to the council as an action to move forward. But I think we're at the point now where, once we receive the funds on the 19th, we're, I think we're ready to go and start this process full board, which I think is a lot faster than any of us anticipated. I believe we have three years to use the funds. I could be wrong on that. But we're at the point now where we have all the resources we need to move forward that I don't think it's going to be much of an issue.
When, Lou, when's the next scheduled showboat committee meeting? Do you guys have one scheduled?
We don't have one scheduled.
No?
Yeah.
Because I would like, that last committee of the whole, it seemed like the majority of the time we took up talking about options, right? We didn't get into any of the other bullet points. Now the options thing is off the table. So I think we need to do that meeting over again and focus now on what we're actually going to do.
Which is why I think the committee should meet first and then we should report back.
Yep. Is that feasible? You think you could throw a meeting together sometime tonight or tomorrow?
Yeah, we generally organize the meetings and put a little bit of that larger showboat committee that Lou has formed. We have a few of those members pulled up into our meeting and they work with us on development of the project. So yeah, we'll certainly get that going very soon.
Yeah, with the holiday we were just saying.
No, yeah, right. And then we had to wait for that thing to get signed anyway.
Right.
Is it feasible to do for the next committee of the whole on the 22nd?
No, because we have the planning commission, we have the planning commission meeting with recreational marijuana.
All right. Why don't you throw that meeting together, I guess, and then we'll come in there once.
Could we push that recreational meeting back?
You could. You could.
Showboat is such a priority that's a year down the road.
Yeah.
What about if we do the first, the first meeting in February?
Just double up. Or we could push planning back to the first February too, because that, I mean, we're looking at another 11 months before, right, before we can do anything.
Well, 18 months before recreational marijuana really comes into fruition.
Well, yeah.
The showboat thing is just huge. It's a fast track, doesn't it? We can do that.
Let's do that. I'll get with you tomorrow and then we'll see what we can throw together. And if we can do it on the 22nd, we'll give a planning and see if they're okay with pushing it back. All right, sound good? Everybody good on that? Anything else you want to talk about on that?
No.
All right. New business, item six, number A, audit presentation, Michael.
Peter Heitner is here tonight. He's from, we're Free Development Heitner, did our annual audit. And he's going, he's going to report to you now, as he does annually, on his findings. Peter?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. My name's Peter Heitner and I represent Free Development Heitner, the firm of independent certified public accountants.
Oh, there we go.
That performed the audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2018. And I'm here to report to you. And what I put together are some slides that show the results of operations and the dollars coming in and going out. And basically, the slides follow the financial statements that are bound and look like this and are submitted to the state of Michigan and bond holders like to see these as well. But historically, I walked through the slides and hopefully spurred some questions from you. First of all, I'd like to point out that the financial statements are the responsibility of management and it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. Our opinion is on page one and two of the financial statements. And I typically just summarize the information provided on the last paragraph of page one. And the opinion is, I'm going to summarize it. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable of the governmental activities, the business activities, each major fund, as well as the aggregate remaining fund, as well as for the downtown development authority, a component unit of the city, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So our opinion is that the city has followed generally accepted accounting principles as required by the state of Michigan and the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the board that sets the standards for governmental entities across the country. So that's what I would refer to as a clean opinion. And following our opinion is the management's discussion and analysis. And that provides a summary of what did you do from a capital asset purchasing perspective? What occurred with your debt? What is the full accrual business perspective of your operations? And that's this first slide. And it actually is summary information off of page nine. And I wanted to point out why there were some substantial changes this year. If you take a look at the red line, that shows your investment in capital assets. So that typically is infrastructure, streets and buildings, things of that nature. And they're being depreciated over time. So the fact that you're able to increase that line means you're investing more than the capital is depreciating, such as streets, street lighting, sidewalks, buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the blue line represents restricted dollars. Excuse me. And the reason for that substantial decline is the result of removing the balances from your financial statements associated with dollars that are at the community foundation. Under generally accepted accounting principles, those balances are not to be recorded on your books, but are recorded on their books. So it's actually just an adjustment to the beginning balances there. And then when you take a look at the green line, your unrestricted dollars. So the restricted dollars went down. Those are reflected at the community foundation. The green line went down, your unrestricted dollars. And you can see that began in 2014. That's the year that the new pension standard was implemented, which required you to record a pension liability to the extent your pension plan was underfunded. And then you can see it kind of flattened out. And now for 2018 and the beginning number for 2017, that reflects your other post-employment or healthcare coverage to retirees being recorded on your books that was not previously recorded. So in 14, a large change in the accounting standards associated with pension recording. And then this year, large change in the accounting for those other post-employment or healthcare for retirees that finds being recorded on your books. So very substantial changes, but that's the reason behind those changes. So that blue line going down, I looked at it and that's the LCTV to the extent there are dollars at the community foundation. That's about 2.5 million dollars reduced off your books. Also, there was for the Look Foundation, I believe, $250,000 with the foundation. And an additional $350,000 was added this year. So the balances are there for the specific purpose that you designated, but no longer reflected on your books until they make a payment back to you and it's used for the purpose. So accounting changes are the substantial changes here, like the exception of that increase in the red line. Now, the next graph shows your business activities. And this represents light and power, water, wastewater, airport. And you can see again, substantial investments in infrastructure. And that's light and power, but also you're doing quite a bit of the water sewer work here. So in the years when you have a project, that red line spikes. And then as it's depreciated, it'll decline. But the fact that it's increasing, you're putting more dollars again into infrastructure, then they are being depreciated. You can see your unrestricted, fairly consistent from year to year. And the restricted balance is fairly minimal. And that restricted balance relates to bond covenants. You're setting aside dollars initially when a bond's issued, I believe. Primarily light and power. And then when those bonds are paid down, those restricted dollars can be used for other purposes. So that's a business perspective. Look at the bottom line. What is the net position of the governmental activities, the business type activities? And the next slide that we have, this just shows your expenses of your governmental activities. And this is the full accrual business perspective. So we're showing depreciation expense, not when we, not the expenditures when we purchase capital items. But it just shows to what extent are the governmental activities self-supporting with program revenues, charges for services, operating and capital grants. And so the differential here between the blue and the red is made up with property taxes, unrestricted state share revenues, as well as unrestricted investment income. And the anomaly there with the highways and streets, the Act 51 funding, or the fuel tax, fuel, gas and light tax, is reflected as a program revenue here. And so in years when you don't do a large project, that'll spike up. And then years when you do the project, it flips the other way. The next slide that we have is looking at your not full accrual perspective, but at your fund accounting perspective of, this is the perspective from which you budget your operations. So the initial slides we looked at are really consolidating things, laying it in from a business perspective. Here are just dollars associated with those bigger funds in your governmental activities. For the general fund, you can see that you've ended the year for 2018 in the best financial position you've been in for about 10 years. You can see back in 2009, not a very substantial balance there and that's difficult to operate. And you take a look at your major local streets and those spike up and down based on the projects. But you can see you ended up with a pretty good financial position across those three fund types. General fund was great. Now, the next slide we have is just the expenditures of your general fund from year to year. And these expenditures will include the purchase of capital items. So the year you replace the carpet in a building or replace the roof, it'll show up right here on the financial statements. And this is that modified accrual basis of accounting or the perspective that you budget on and operate on throughout the year. You can see things are fairly straight across. Public safety is the largest component of the operation. But nothing that I wanted to point out to you, just looking at it over time. The next slide that we have, this is your general fund, unassigned fund balances, a percentage of expenditures and transfers out. You can see you're being compared to a number of other cities. These are other clients that we work with. And just looking at, what is that percentage compared to the other peer group? There is large organizations that we work with and smaller organizations. Typically, the smaller, the higher the percentage. Now, we're going to take a look at some of your business type activities. This is your sewer fund, expenses, revenues and changes in net position for the current year. You can see at a slight loss, these, the sewer fund, water fund, electric fund typically operate just slightly better than a break even perspective. So had a couple of years of loss with the sewer fund. And the next slide shows your water operations. Positive bottom line change for five years in a row. But that allows you to put some investment in your infrastructure without having to go to the debt market theoretically. And the last operation, you'll see, it looks like a smaller change, but when you take a look at the extent of the revenues and the expenses, they're much more substantial than the water and sewer operations, about seven times as big. But the utility of low light power was able to end the year with a positive change in net position and that's for the fifth year in a row. And I didn't look back any further. And so we've looked at the governmental activities, the business type activities, and then each of the larger fund operations. And those are the financial statements presented in the front of the audit report. The other things that I wanted to point out to you is just to keep track of, if you take a look on page 48 of the audit, I'm not sure if I'm doing that to your sound system or not. So tell me if I'm doing something wrong here. Okay. If you take a look at page 50, I just wanted to point out that this is the first year that this presentation is being made. And so on page 50 is your other post-employment healthcare plan for retirees. And it shows to what extent there are, there's a liability associated with that plan, as well as the funding available to fund that plan. And on page 52, that same information is being provided separately for low light and power's plan. And if you would turn back with me to page 48, a similar presentation is being provided for the entire city pension plan. So this includes the city as well as light and power. And it shows that you have improved your funding ratio for your pension plan from the previous year by 4%. So from 61 to 65% funding. And you're going to accumulate you're going to accumulate 10 years' worth of this data. And then you kind of can see a historical perspective of what's occurring. So for those other plans that we looked at initially, you'll see that over the next years, you'll accumulate 10 years' worth of data.
Rich killed it.
Those are mine.
Rich in there.
Yeah. Keep it off. Keep it off. Hello?
Grandma's speaking up a little, I guess.
Okay, so what we've looked at is your governmental light and power financial statements for your business type activities, your governmental activities, each of the major ones.
Who's the kicker?
He's getting his gun.
As well as some of your biggest. And that perspective that we're providing you with is, from here, what our opinion is basically providing that information. In addition, the report has a number of budgeted and actual statements. It has a number of combining statements that show the balance sheet for the smaller ones. And that's represented in the back of the report. But it kind of gives you a walk through the financial information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. In addition to the audit itself, we also provide several letters related to the audit procedures that we performed, our responsibilities, your responsibilities. Those are required communications under generally accepted auditing standards. And so we provide those in a written format. We can do it verbally as well. And I would be happy to answer any questions or concerns you have about the financial information.
I have some questions. And it's great to see that we've got improved by 4%. And I don't know if low light power gets the credit for that either, City. I know we both made some changes and tried to add additional funds to get us in a better spot. But that's great in one year to improve 4%. I was looking at the city wall net position on page five and six. And the longer you're on the council, the greater you get about asking questions. So starting at the top of page five, our current and other assets under governmental activities, we went from 5.8 million to 3.4. We lost 2.4 million.
That reflects that change in accounting associated with low cable TV? The dollars? The dollars historically were reported on your books and now they're not reported on your books, but at the community foundation.
Sure. And then business type activities, we decreased 1.1 million. Is that the same thing?
I believe that's associated with a bond issue and dollars being put in the ground for some of the water and sewer operations, or construction activity.
Okay.
So the bonds, I think, were issued in 2017. And this year, you really went to work and you're doing some of that infrastructure work.
Okay. Page six, charges for services under revenues. Our charges for services are $660,000 less than they were in 2017.
I believe that's primarily the result of the power cost adjustment factor associated with low light and power. And so if you take a look at the business type activities, that decline is 600-plus thousand dollars there for charges for services. Also, there were two adjustments, one to water and one to wastewater associated with your wholesale contracts with the townships that were a balance that is due to the townships. So it's across the board. There was a lower, I believe, power cost adjustment factor and electric charge. And then there was a reduction in water and wastewater charges associated with your wholesale contracts.
Okay. And expenses a little further down on the same page. Culture and recreation went from 344,000 in 17 to 726. So we spent about 400,000 more on recreation.
That is associated with the dollars. There was a $350,000 contribution from the Look Memorial to the community foundation for the purpose of the Look Memorial, but it shows as an outflow or an expense in the current year. So that's a great one to pick up on, because it's a big dollar amount.
Right.
But as the dollars were moved from the city's management of the investments to the community foundation, that shows as an outflow or an expense.
Okay. One last question. Highways and streets, we went from 290,000 to 239,000. So this year, we spent 50,000 less on streets than we did the year before?
And to some extent, that'll be based on changes associated with pension, OPM, and depreciation expense. So full accrual concept items, but to the extent there are additional, there's additional liability for your pension, let's say, due to the amortization of investment income on those, on the pension over a five-year period, that can impact this balance. But also, you're correct, to the extent you have a bad winter, it can impact that balance. When we look at the fund financial statements further in, that's a better perspective of more project. Here, we should be seeing depreciation on our projects, not necessarily when we do the project. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Did the bond coming offline too impact that? Did we have that bond coming offline in the local street fund?
That shouldn't have an impact here because it's full accrual. So that payment, the interest would have an impact, so that should be part of it. But the principal component wouldn't impact this because this is really looking at it more from a business perspective, whether that bond's payable or a liability and the reduction or the payment of principal don't show up as an expenditure from this perspective. But it would in the fund financial statements, where we're really looking more at dollars in and dollars out. But some of those full accrual concepts can definitely impact these balances, like the pension changes, the OPM changes, depreciation changes. If you have a big asset you can fall off, you'll notice it. And of course, interest expense associated with bonds that are paid off.
Great, thank you for the explanation.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to be here.
All right, number B, city banking council signature, Michael.
Yeah, this is our annual requirements for signatories for accounts we have. So through some accounts, we allow authorized signatures, the mayor, mayor procs on himself, city treasurer, police chief, deputy treasurer, Lori Gerard. That would be for most of our accounts. Also, two of these would identify that Sue, Lori, Amy Brown and Luanne Wazniewski would have access to the safety deposit box. And then also identify the accounts that we have. Banking-wise, we utilize Union Bank, Huntington Banks, PNC, Fitzer Bank, Macintyre Bank, Bank of America, Mercantile, Bank of Michigan, stuff just to identify. You want to have bank, you want to have your fund in multiple accounts. A lot of that has to do with the FBI, C protections. 10 years ago, when the banks were going under, it was much smarter to start diversifying your money into different accounts because in worst-case scenario, the bank went under, technically lost anything over 200,000 dollars. So we do utilize multiple accounts for deposits.
All right, I have a motion to approve those signature.
Make a motion that approves the signature.
House support.
All right, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Item number C, M.D. Resolution 119.
The attached resolution is an agreement between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the CLO. The attached agreement is necessary for the installation of the weigh-finding signs that'll be installed in the next few weeks, as well as our installed and activated electronic speed signs on Main Street. Due to both the weigh-finding and electronic speed signs being installed on number 21 or east and west Main Street, M.D. controls it right away. In short, this agreement allows the city to install, maintain the above signage. This is my recommendation that the city council approve Resolution 1-19 for the special truck line maintenance permit is presented. Just to verify, the city attorney did look at this resolution. I need to get back in touch with M.D. A little bit of inconsistency from what the city attorney found in the A little bit of inconsistency from what the city attorney found in the legal language, but we can correct that after that. But what we're approving is what it's being presented.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution one dash nineteen.
I'll support.
All right, any other discussion on that one? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Item number D, public hearing for the King Milling Industrial Development District.
The attached resolution is to set up a public hearing date for an industrial development district to be established from establishment for an expansion of the King Milling property located at one forty-nine South Broadway Street. If the city wishes to consider an industrial facility tax credit under Public Act one ninety-eight, a district for this parcel must be established. An application for this debate has been filed regarding this property. This resolution is required per state statute, and properly legal notifications must occur. I will make sure those occur. I'm not making the recommendation, I'm forming the, I'm setting the district, but I am recommending that we approve resolution zero-two dash nineteen so we can have a public hearing.
And they'll be here to answer all the questions that we had.
Remember, it's a two-step process. I mean, you can ask any questions you want, but the first step is to create the district, then they have to come back for the, for the abatement. So, it's a two-step process, but you could, but you have to have the district in place in order to give the abatement, but you can also deny the district as well.
This is the first step.
Correct.
Okay. And I'll make a motion that we accept resolution two dash nineteen, industrial development district, King Milling.
Support.
All right, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
All right, item number E, light power board compensation scheme.
Yeah, thank you. Chapter sixteen, section sixteen point one of the city charter requires the council to set the compensation for the low light power board each year. For the last two years, the compensation has been thirty-five dollars a meeting per board member, up to twenty meetings per year. It's my recommendation to stay with that same compensation for another year, and if we continue to have longer meetings, next year I may advise a higher compensation for keeping that thirty-five.
And overnight rate?
Yeah, yeah. You have midnight, you know.
There's a nice little hand they could run rooms at right down the street.
So, my recommendation is to stay with thirty-five every month.
Okay, that'll be resolution three dash nineteen.
I will make a motion.
All right. I'll support. Sue?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
I mean, Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
I was mayor for just a few seconds. I've been in both ways, so that's very great, too. Item number F, public hearing for the urban program, Mike.
City administration recently learned about being a participant in the Michigan Department of Transportation Small Urban Project Program, and is eligible to submit projects to the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-three call for projects. This program awards transportation projects on a rotating basis to small urban areas with populations of five thousand, fifty thousand. The maximum award amount is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in federal costs for road construction. This does not include any engineering costs, this is hard construction costs. As part of this, the city would need to provide a twenty percent match to that construction cost. Monroe from Fremont to Avery is federally eligible and able to participate in this program. I've already made the proper request with Grand Valley Metro Council for consideration. I'm getting an estimate as we speak as to the construction costs for this project, but it would be, if, one of the other nice things too is it wouldn't, one of the concerns we had was, I know in past previous federal projects we've involved and we've had to give up parking, this project doesn't call for that, so it would still be allowed for on-street parking and all that, but we would need to set a public hearing. So, our deadline to submit to MDOT is February first, and a public hearing must be also established by the participating agency, and I'm recommending the local city council set a public hearing of January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, to hear public comment on the application of Monroe Street, Fremont, Avery, and the small urban program, transportation program. Like I said, it's something I just found out about probably about end of November, so, and I had, and then more of the information came right before the break, so I couldn't get it on any sooner.
Okay, I'll look for a motion if you want to establish that public hearing for the twenty-second for the smaller urban program.
Yeah. Toothache January twenty-second. Thanks, man.
So moved. Support.
Anybody else? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right, Board of Intermission Report, Mr. Canfield.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Chambers.
I have nothing.
Mr. Yankovic, not yet, right? Mr. Salzweil.
February eighth is, I mean, close, we get your request for the LC's T D down, down end of February at five P M.
Fire Authority was today, the major point of discussion was the full-time staffing, so they'll be here on the twenty-second to present that to us. Twenty-first had a whole township to present to them, and then the thirtieth up to Bridge and St. Hill. They're also doing a member survey, I guess a satisfaction survey. So, I'll bring you guys the results of that when they get back. PDA is Thursday, and Vision, do we have anywhere to generate Vision?
We probably haven't.
Okay. Well, good luck. See on that, man.
Your turn, city manager.
Want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, want to remind everyone that the next meeting is on Tuesday, January twenty-second. Also, reminder that the second meeting in February is on February nineteenth, on that Tuesday, not the Monday, on President's Day that day, city holiday closed. I received word today from Brian Aduhoff that they're working with Williams Works right now to be able to provide us a preliminary capital improvement plan for administration first to review, and then we can at least come back to the council to discuss, to discuss that for the, for the Saw grant, so their underground infrastructure for all projects, all of that can be combined in the capital improvement plan, so I'm hoping to have something back in the next couple of weeks to look at. Thursday, I met with Williams and Works at our joint meeting with the park board, I was directed to get a sketch of the park space that we might be acquiring and that land transfer, transfer. I had Williams Works, they are drafting some sketches for me, and I'm going to be presenting those to the park board while they receive them. On Thursday, both the police chief and I met with MDOT regarding the left-hand turn signal in Maine Hudson. They informed us that in the end of two thousand sixteen, they did a, they did a study to determine whether or not a, we were eligible, we had enough traffic to constitute a left-hand turn signal. At the time, they did not believe there was enough traffic yet, their major concern also was the fact that the way the lights cycled, they were concerned that the way the, the way the traffic was now, their concern was that this would cause an excessive backup during peak hours on Hudson, not necessarily on Maine. That being said, they also recognized that since that time, traffic had decreased, and they've also noticed increases in traffic on Hudson, and also with the modifications we made with Broadway and the light at Ford Road, they, they, they are going to come back out to Sprint and do another test to determine whether or not we're eligible. It sounds like we're pretty close to meeting that threshold that they'll, they'll allow it. We even discussed some ideas with them, with the light signals and all that, to where maybe that backup on Hudson might not be as bad. And actually had a very positive meeting with them, and so hopefully, they're going to come out, do that study sometime in April and May before school gets out, and we can get a pretty accurate traffic read, and hopefully we can get to the point where we can get that light, that signal in place. Sounds like our meeting on twenty-second is going to be moved, I just remembered something I got to talk to you about at the meeting. And also.
Which meeting?
The planning commission meeting.
Oh.
Are we moving that now, or? I just remembered, I just remembered something.
Okay.
City attorney will not be able to come, the first meeting in February, since he'll be at the Super Bowl, we probably need him for that.
He's going to the Super Bowl?
Yeah.
Do you have an extra ticket?
No.
Not mess up meeting.
No.
Never mind, continue, sorry. We'll need him for the planning commission?
I think you do.
Okay, well, then, I'll get with Rick tomorrow, and we'll try to push the show up officially.
So.
When you get that over.
Yep. Fire Authority, which you mentioned, will be presenting at the next council meeting as well. I'm going to turn over to the police chief real quick, actually, before I do that, I just want to remind everyone, Dr. Lubetter will be here, January thirtieth, Wednesday, January thirtieth, from five to nine. And I'll do the location, I'm going to try and do it as the fire follow-up we did last time. And I'm going to turn over to the police chief, I want to.
Hold on, let, we have.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, again, I'll extend the invitation, the planning commission, the city council will come to our meeting either next Monday or second Tuesday in February. And the conversation is between all of us.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if it's at your meeting or our meeting, it sounds like your meeting is getting really jammed up.
We will be absent as city manager, I think, for your February meeting.
Yes.
Aren't you doing that in Maryland state?
Yeah.
Again, January fourteenth, you're more than welcome.
I'm going to turn over to the police chief, do you want to talk about the police accreditation program?
Good evening, Mayor and city council, it's been a number of years since we've done a full evaluation of our department policies and procedures, and I was looking at doing it this year. Michigan Association Chiefs of Police has started an accreditation program similar to a national program. It's been state certified by the Michigan Coalition of Law Enforcement Standards. One of our local agencies just completed the accreditation process last year, and it was Rockford. And since I've been meeting with my colleagues over there, and they're similar in size to us, I thought this would be an opportunity for us to get our department accredited. The process takes about two years, so next month, Sergeant Pierce and I will be heading to Lansing to start the accreditation process. They're going to tell us what we are doing right, and also tell us areas where we can improve upon. And with our policies and procedures being revamped to a state standard versus our own or insurance company standard, I see this becoming a national trend, where all enforcement agencies will try to have the same standard. So, I'm just trying to get out ahead of the game and get us accredited in the next two years. That is our plan.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
That's all I have.
All right, comments, Mr. Canfield?
Nothing.
Mr. Chambers?
Uh, I wish everybody a Happy New Year. Glad to see that we went through the loop on the vote to Halloway, we can get a vote. That's really good news, so I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Ian?
Hello.
Mr. Salzweil?
I'm good.
All right, I attended the council on Saturday.
I did.
Pretty great. Not really my prime hours of operation, but we all got through it. I don't have anything else, Happy New Year, I guess. No movement on appointments. Oh, you want to talk about the, what's it called?
Yeah, the feasibility, the rec park feasibility committee that we were putting together, we do have interest from some area residents, like to have them appointed to this temporary committee, so we can get started on that project. The people who submitted letters of interest are Denise Barker, Rick Sees, Teresa Monch who represents the parks board, Councilman Yankovic, John Sterling, Chris Flazar, Nicole Hawley, Bob Rogers, Stacy Craters, Mayor DeBoer, all express interest in serving on that, in that project, so I'd like to have the committee appointed so we can get started on that process.
So, you do the motion.
Yeah.
You want a consensus?
Definitely, consensus is possible.
Consensus, anybody have a problem with that? Getting started, so we can turn that into whatever we're going to turn it into. All right, we'll do that, and then, you know, Suzie, do you have any idea how many times a year that the construction board of appeals meets?
They haven't been several years.
Yeah, that's what I thought Mark Munson won meeting or something like that, four years. So, that should be pretty easy. Wonder if, now, we do have some interest in the DDA spot of Mike Larkins, Mike Springer who's interested in making this spot, because his staffing situation over there has changed, so I'll get with him. And then, historic district commission, I don't know, Jeff Phillips said he may be interested in continuing on that, he was on it when he was on council, but he would have to get a list of meeting dates and times before he could come out. So, we'll keep working on that, I guess. Mr. Salzweil?
Without a make a motion, adjourn at seven forty-six.
Support.
A little favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I don't want to have to.